Bring the meeting to order, video meeting. Do we want to announce? Was there an announcement we wanted to make, Andrew, to the public that might be watching on Facebook? To email any comments?
Yes, if the public would like to email any comments to planning@westgov.com. We will get, the planning staff will get any comments via that email address and we can forward it on to the board or the commission.
Are you hearing me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Did you hear what I said about the? The first thing in the meeting might be to make a comment to the public who might be watching on Facebook?
Yes, yes, if any members of the public can submit comments to planning@westgov.com. Planning staff will receive that email and we will forward those comments to the commission.
Okay, right. And that that will happen as live as it can happen, we assume.
Correct, yes.
All right. The first item then for business would be the minutes from the March 12th meeting. Everyone printed out a copy or read, read any questions, comments, corrections?
A motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries. Item. First item of new business has been postponed until May. The May meeting, so we'll go to item B, which would be the signage for Heritage Honda. I guess it's B and C, but I guess we'll tackle them one at a time, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All right. Pursuant to zoning ordinance, section 164, 41A7, automobile trailer and implement sales and services use is listed as a permitted use in the B business zone. Business signs. Additionally, business signs pertaining to a use on the premises are also permitted as an accessory use in the business zone. On March 2nd, 2020, Heritage Honda, represented by MG permits, applied for an application for signer awning for a freestanding monument sign for the Heritage Honda automobile dealers, sorry, automobile sales and service use located at 580 Baltimore Boulevard with Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation account identifier number 07027834. The freestanding monument sign exceeds 125 square feet in area, requiring the sign to be reduced in area in order for the commission to approve. Just to provide some history for this site, a site development plan was conditionally approved by the commission on November 8th, 2018, and alterations to the approved building signage were approved by the commission on December 3rd, 2019. In addition to this property, Heritage Honda also operates an automobile sales use on the adjacent property to the west with account identifier 07003560, which is proposing wall-mounted sign exceeding 64 square feet as outlined in item C for this agenda. Staff is concerned that this adjacent property to the west has the same address as 580 Baltimore Boulevard as the subject property. Each property contains a building and a dedicated access to and from Maryland Route 140, creating safety concerns and response related to fire and rescue and police calls. Therefore, the subject property should be readdressed to alleviate these safety issues. This application, case number 1755, proposes a 157.5 square foot, 15 foot by 15 foot nine inches tall and 10 foot wide freestanding monument sign. The freestanding monument sign exceeds the allowable 125 square foot requirements by 32.5 square feet. To obtain commission approval, the applicant must reduce the area of the sign by 32.5 square feet while maintaining the height of no more than 20 feet. The area of all signs on the premise shall not exceed three square feet for each linear foot of the front building wall. It has been indicated that the linear feet of the existing building, the building's front wall length is 153 feet two inches. Therefore, according to the zoning ordinance, 459.6 square feet of signage is allowed at the subject property. In December, the commission approved three applications for signer awnings for 190.5 square feet of wall-mounted signage at the subject property. A revised proposed freestanding monument sign of no more than 125 square feet would bring the total signage at the subject property to 315.5 square feet, well under the 459.6 square foot allowed. For the commission's review pursuant to section 164, 121A5A, in determining whether or not to approve an application, the zoning administrator or the commission shall take into consideration the following factors. Traffic and pedestrian safety, the size, configuration, elevation, and location of the property, existing signs on the property and neighboring properties, aesthetics, and any other factors relating to location, size, design, composition, and specific character of the proposed signs deemed appropriate by the zoning administrator or the commission. No sign shall be approved if the zoning administrator or the commission finds that it would not achieve a maximum of compatibility, safety, efficiency, and attractiveness. For development design preference manual review, planning staff reviewed for applicable requirements in the development design preference manual and found no problem with the proposal. For the recommendation, city staff recommends that the commission consider approval of one proposed freestanding monument sign subject to the following conditions of approval. Number one, obtain a new address for the subject property. And number two, maintain the design of the freestanding monument sign and reduce the total area by 32.5 square feet to be approved by the zoning administrator. We have also included some draft motions on the staff report for commission's use. If you have any questions, please let me know. And I also believe Mr. Joe Heisler, who is the architect for Heritage Honda, is also on the, on the meeting in case the commission has any questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Does Mr. Heisler have anything to add to the, to Andrew's comments?
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, great, thanks, thanks for letting me speak.
The only thing I would, two things I would add is we were, we had been looking at the sign. It has a lighted blue top with the Honda logo on it, and then it has a, an opaque unlit white base that hides the steel columns supporting the sign. The blue lighted portion is 10 foot by 10 foot or 100 square feet. That is what we had been thinking was the sign. And that the column below, which is white, just a white shroud around the steel, we were not considering that part of the sign, which would put it at 100 square feet. And then the other point is the existing sign on the site, the existing pylon is, I believe, around 25 feet. And the owners were looking to upgrade the look of the property and.
Thank you, that's just a matter of, of how you measure every other sign we deal with, I take it, is that correct?
With, and Mr. Chair, with this, in speaking with the zoning administrator with, due to the Honda's branding and Honda has blue sign with white lettering, it would appear that with the bottom of the sign being white, that would all be incorporated into the branding for Honda, which would be the, the, the sign would be the entire freestanding sign. With a monument, with a monument sign, usually it has a stone or brick base, and this does not.
Okay. So, so I guess I'm trying to figure out what, what we would be approved, if we're approving to go forward, it would be that they would just have to size it down to move forward? Or? Is that correct?
Correct, one of, on the second recommendation, we have maintained the design of the freestanding monument sign and reduced the total area by 32.5 square feet. And then after that, if you would approve it with that condition, staff can take care of that administratively.
Okay.
And quickly, if I could, the reason it's in front of the planning commission is because it exceeds the 65 square feet that staff can approve. Anything over 64 square feet has to come before the planning commission. You're approving the increase in sign square footage with a Honda signage for the freestanding sign.
To what number?
You cannot approve anything above 125 square feet.
Okay, I got you, okay, okay. Any member questions?
And I will put that up on the, sorry about that.
Any other commission member questions?
Are you saying that the base of it is what's being, is being included as part of the total signage then?
Yeah, typically, if you look at the design manual, a base or monument sign is on a stone or brick wall or foundation. A lot of times, they try to use the same material as the development. If that was the case here, we would not count that. But in this case, it's a pole-mounted sign and they are wrapping the poles with a white opaque plastic similar to the Honda material. And again, being white and following the same branding of Honda, we included that as part of the signage. If they were to locate that sign on a brick base or something like that as a monument type of sign, we would not count the base.
Unless it was black.
I think it still goes to what the design manual looks for is what a monument sign is, what that wall material that you're locating a sign on top of a a wall or some structure versus just pole-mounted that you're wrapping the poles.
What if you use white, white brick or white stone and then it would match their sign, but not look as much like part of the sign because it does really look good with the white?
Could I make a comment? It's Joe.
Who is that, Joe?
Joe Heisler.
Okay.
The facade of the Honda building is white metal panels and white drive it with score lines so that it is really a white panel facade of the building itself. There's no stone or brick really on the, on the property.
Yeah, it looks good, it really does look good the way it is.
I don't have a problem with the way it is, but is the staff telling us that that's just not feasible? Because to me, it like, to me, there's a, there's a differentiation between the sign to me appears like it's being mounted on, so I don't understand.
They, again, they can keep the look of the sign. If they reduce the width of it in some fashion to get to the 125 square feet, you'd have the same sign, it would look the same. It just may not be as wide as 10 feet wide, maybe eight feet wide. And the sign would look the same and match the 125 square foot requirement.
Or possibly use a white stone for the, and make it a true monument sign, right? Or either a white brick or red brick or, you know what I mean, if they wanted white, you could do a white.
Match with the design manual shows for a monument sign, yes.
Yes, yeah, that's what, okay.
I think, I think we can look, I'd be happy to look at the base in comparison to the facade of the building. I did not do that, I was not aware of that. That could be a good argument. If the base matches the material and design of the building itself, that is what the intent of the monument sign is, so that's a possibility. I just, I have not had a chance to make that determination.
I do think if you, if you made it brick, or the white brick or stone, it's not going to look as modern as everything else is kind of gonna not match. It looks good the way it is, I don't see where the poles look like they're part of the sign.
I guess when they're lit up, they're going, is what I'm thinking, they probably would when they're lit, maybe when they're lit up, that's all.
So they have to keep it the same height, but make it less wide? Is that the way I understand it?
Yes.
Will they, will you lose your proportions of your logo when you do that?
This is Joe again. Unfortunately, the Honda, it's a fixed set of signs. The next size down that would get under 125 feet would be 13 foot nine high by eight wide.
Right, that was my question is, can you get under that number and is it a big deal? But what you're telling me.
The reduction in visibility to the owners is a big deal.
Okay, that's, I know what I was getting at, okay. Hey, Mark, there was a note about the safety portion, fire and police. I kind of want to go back to that real quick.
This property is, there's two Honda facilities and they're on two separate parcels.
Right.
Each parcel has its own building, but each building is addressed the same.
Okay.
That's the concern, if there was a fire or rescue or phone or police issue and they're saying come to five, I believe it's 580, you have two buildings addressed the same, that's just not, each, each building should have its own address for safety, safety purposes. I don't know how they have the same address for two distinct buildings on separate parcels.
It can happen because I own a building in Westminster that has the exact same address as New Windsor Road. So it does happen.
And I'm sure.
And it's not safe, you're right.
It shouldn't happen, when a new building is built, an address is applied to that building and I don't know why or how this happened. I, I think for safety purposes, each building should have its own address.
Is the question, hey, Joe, is there any issue with getting, obtaining this new address? Do you see this as something that's going to take a long time or what's, how long is that? Is that a major roadblock for you all?
Was that directed to you, Joe?
Yes.
Sorry you're breaking up. I don't know exactly what the obtaining an address involves. The owners are fine with that. The, the address on both buildings predates their ownership. But yeah, they're, they would be fine if it's not a long drawn out or extremely expensive legal process, they would be fine with that.
So what I would propose, since it sounds like this is something that could almost easily be addressed by staff just driving by the building tomorrow, is I would make a motion to approve the freestanding monument sign subject to the conditions that the applicant obtain a new address for the subject property and that staff go to the location and see if the sign, the monument and the building make it appear as if this monument sign could work. So that would be what I would say, because if staff literally just drives there tomorrow and says, you know what? One of the building in the sign do make it kind of work, I don't see why it's necessary for us to have to come back in 30 days and have like a brick, you know, monument sign, unless of course, staff goes there and says, no, this doesn't work. That's what I would.
I'll second that motion.
Very good, does staff understand the motion? Is that workable with you guys? Mark?
I, I think we'd have to keep the condition two as is with the caveat that staff will work with the applicant to go on site to determine whether the base is similar to the facility, to the building in itself and could act as a monument feature or base.
Right, they might have to change the base so it looks more like the building to where you could make a determination that the top is the sign and the bottom is the base, right?
Exactly, exactly.
I think that's what the motion is trying to say, if you, if you can reach that point between the, the two parties, then we would approve that.
Correct.
That change, is that, so that would be workable for the city?
I'm, I'm happy with that.
Yes, me too.
Well, it's, it's been moved and any other questions on it from the, from the commission? It's been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Second Heritage Honda sign. Item. Drew?
Yes, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
For item C, just a little bit of background information. Pursuant to the zoning ordinance, automobile trailer and implement sales and services is listed as a permitted use in the B business zone. And additionally, pursuant to the zoning ordinance, business signs pertaining to a use on the premises is or are permitted as an accessory use in the business zone. On March 2nd, 2020, Heritage Honda, once again represented by MG permits, applied for review of five applications for signer awning for wall-mounted signs for the Heritage Honda automobile sales and service use located at 580 Baltimore Boulevard with tax account identifier number 07003560. One of the proposed wall-mounted signs exceeds 64 square feet in area, but is under 125 square feet in area, requiring commission review and approval. The application for sign or awning, case for case number 1756, proposes a 65.5 square foot wall-mounted sign. The area of all signs on the premises shall not exceed three square feet for each linear foot of the front building wall. The linear feet of the front wall is indicated as 177 feet 4.63 inches. Therefore, 532.2 square feet of signage is allowed at the subject property. The proposed 65.5 square foot wall-mounted sign and the additional four signs would bring the total signage area at the subject property to 169.8 square feet. For the commission review, that information I went through last time. I can, I'll, I can, I can skip by that this time, so you don't have to all hear me read all that again. And for development design preference manual, staff has reviewed for applicable requirements in the development design preference manual and found no problem with the proposal. For the staff recommendation, staff recommends that the commission consider approval of one proposed wall-mounted sign. If you have any questions, Mr. Chair, please let me know. And also, Mr. Heisler is here to answer any questions on behalf of Heritage Honda. Thank you. And I will put the proposal up.
I'll make a motion that we move to approve the signage based off the draft motion provided by the staff in their memorandum.
Second it.
And, and what, what motion would that be, Vice Chair Albers?
One.
One, okay.
A second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Heisler. The last item that I have, I don't know if Mr. Spade is going to, has anything to report because I understand that the, we are dropping the annual report from the county and to another meeting. Is Mr. Spade there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right.
Evening, everyone.
You have the floor, or the computer, or whatever.
Obviously, a lot has changed since we last spoke. The county is now all working from home. And as far as our day-to-day tasks, such as things, development review, demographics, those type of things are all still being worked on by staff. But as you mentioned, some of our bigger projects are put on hold for the time being. Specifically, the annual report, we're just waiting to hear back from the state at this point. They do expect to delay the deadline for that, so we're just waiting for their guidance. As well as the comprehensive rezoning, we're still going through the process of evaluating those specific properties that have requested to be rezoned. But it, the timeline is unclear as far as moving forward with those rezonings. Other than that, there's not too much to update. But most staff will still be working regular hours. I can be reached if you have any questions for myself or anyone else going forward.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Sam, do you have any comments from the public?
That is a negative chair beaver.
Okay. We have no old business, any staff comments?
I, I would just want to bring up what happened to Mission BBQ. I know that we really wanted to get that on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
Um, the Mission BBQ itself has 96 seats inside the building and they're proposing 34 seats in a patio. Water allocation was only for 96 seats, it did not account for the patio space. So we placed a condition that they had to get allocation, obtain, obtain allocation for those outdoor seating. They were concerned that that may not be possible. So we amended the conditions, we thought in a way that the planning commission could approve it where staff could work with them for the water allocation for these 34 seats. We have enough available water for 16 seats. And the water allocation, they could have moved forward to next year and then fiscal year, I mean, the calendar year of 2021, they could get the remainder of the seats. They had concerns with that, so they were asked, they asked to pull themselves off the agenda.
I see, okay, so the, so the, for commercial use, the water allocation is really almost gone for the year already.
If they were to apply today and obtain the remainder for their 16 seats, we would not have any water allocation for a restaurant for the remainder of the year.
Oh, for us, okay, for a particular purpose.
Yes, it's, it's limited, the restaurant uses are limited to how much water is allocated to them.
I see.
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, in the, in the planning and, or sorry, in the city of Westminster water and sewer allocation policy, like Mr. Depot was mentioning, there is, the mayor and council has a separate category for restaurants, for restaurant uses. So it's broken out from commercial industrial and there's a certain amount of water allocated every year in the restaurant category.
Okay.
So our goal was to work with them this month. Try to grant them as much as we can and give them some assurance that they will have water available with the outside seating, hopefully in the near future, and then be back in May.
Right, was, was that going to be a new building they were going to build there or you reuse the old?
New building.
Okay, yeah.
Hey, Mark, just question, that had been going on, we'd have been in discussions with them for quite some time and approved their water allocation months ago. Was this a last minute type of change that they?
Which, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, unfortunately, yes. When I was reviewing the staff report, we looked at the numbers and we pulled the water allocation application that was approved and it was limiting to 96 seats. They were equally surprised with that. They thought they had an understanding, but I could not find anything that we granted anything beyond the 96. So I was, I'm subject to what we granted. So again, we do have some left over. I would have hoped they would have submitted the water allocation application as of today or soon, so we can start looking forward.
Seems like the thing to do because it'll take you half the year to get it built. Then you'll be almost into next year.
Yes, so unfortunately, yeah, exactly, that would be my point, is by time construction is completed and they're up and running, the hope would be, they wouldn't skip a beat and the water would be there.
Mark, this is Tom, I have a question, so with everything going on out there with many restaurants being either closed
with many restaurants being either closed or just takeout delivery only, it seems like for at least another couple of months perhaps, is that contemplated in this decision?
No, it is not. Um, those building, those businesses still are allocated a certain amount of water and continue that, or hold that allocation, essentially bank it. So if they were to leave and a new business came in, whatever that previous business had for water allocation would be transferred to the new business. So in this case, Bar, Mission Barbecue, the previous restaurant had an allocation of, um, I want to say 1,400 gallons per day that was then transferred to Mission Barbecue, but with the seating, additional seating, they needed about 3,000 gallons per day. So, um, so they, so we do take that into account, this banking system or this shit hole system of water allocation for new uses. I know it's, it's complicated, and I'm not explaining it too well, and I apologize. But in this case, again, I thought we did have a path. They were just a little apprehensive about moving forward.
Hey, Mark, what, what do you mean, and I don't want to get more into this, but I'm a little concerned, because I remember the conversation about Mission Barbecue. In fact, I believe that I was probably involved in approving their water allocation. So what do they, what do they mean they had an agreement? You know, if you tell us 96 seats, it's 96 seats, and you get a certain allocation for that. Did they elaborate on this agreement?
My understanding is my predecessor had discussions with them, um, about the additional seating. We just could not locate anything. We tried to find past emails, discussions. We just had nothing on record. Trust me, I wish I could have found something that would have helped me, helped them. But in this case, we were limited solely to the water and sewer application, which they submitted and stated the number of gallons per day that they wanted. That's what we approved. And again, when you calculate all that, uh, water, it equals up to 96 seats. I, I believe we can find a path for them, that they can begin construction and open up, again, without, I believe, skipping a beat.
Right.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you. Any other staff, uh, comments?
Yeah, yes, Mr. Chair. Just to go over the, um, last staff report that I sent you, that's on the screen now. Previously, you mentioned to me about, um, reminding commission members about the upcoming election for Planning and Zoning Commission in May. The next regularly scheduled meeting would be May 14th, 2020. In my staff memo, I have some information, um, from ex, excerpts, excerpts from the adopted Planning and Zoning Commission rules and regulations. And also, for more information, I included the entirety of the Planning and Zoning Commission rules and regulations. But, um, for next month, it would be planning to have, we would be planning to have the election for chair and vice chair for this board, this commission. And I just wanted to lay out, um, some information, since I know you mentioned to get the, uh, commission members thinking about the upcoming election. And also, Mr. Chair, I got two more quick items. One of the, the first item, uh, we've customarily came to the Planning and Zoning Commission for different projects going to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The, um, there is a project that is planned to go to the board, or scheduled to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals in May, and that would be a Valvoline Auto Care Center currently at the corner of Gorsage Road and Baltimore Boulevard, where the old Westminster Veterinarian Hospital is. And my second item is just to let everybody, um, who's listening out there know to just fill out your US, your, your, um, 2020 census information. So all the, uh, the county, the city, and the state, we can get the amount of funding that, um, would be allocated to us, um, through filling out your census. And that is all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you. And, uh, for the, for the members, for the election next month, I'll just let you know, I would not be offended by to, uh, give up the, uh, chair to, to spread it around a little bit amongst you other, uh, you other members. And in fact, I would encourage it. I'm not campaigning. So you, you, you have a month to, uh, see if anyone, if anyone would, would like to rotate in and, uh, and, uh, we can keep the flow going. That's all. Unless, unless you have some feedback on that. All right. No, no comments. Any motions for adjournment?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right. It's been moved seconded. We're, we are adjourned.